I'll sit down. I'll have you in the... Oh, I talked to Brandon a couple of weeks ago. We've got our bull riders coming back up again in January. And it's April and that, this PBR event this year. And some of y'all know we do a special needs event on Thursday. And what that is, is we have a special needs rodeo for the special service centers of the county. And they had activities, pony rides, and just stuff for the kids to do because that's the only time they actually get a chance to get out. And then also this year, we've included what we call ABBI, this American Bucket Book Incorporated. Generally, y'all used to send my bull a bucket to events. But what this does is other contractors raise bulls other than myself all across the country. And there'll be a three-year-old and a four-year-old. These guys will bring in their best three-year-olds and their best four-year-olds. And the reason we're doing that is we can get anywhere from 35 to maybe 70 contractors. They'll come into the city, they'll be here from Thursday to Sunday. So they're gonna stay here, they're gonna eat, you know, spend a lot of money around here. It'll generate more revenue for the city. And which I'll still have some bulls here for the short ride stuff, you know, people that come watch my bulls. I think us doing that, it'll help generate a little more revenue and help the accident and help the city.
And you said by the ABBI, that is the same thing? The bulls actually get judged like cowboys do?
Yes.
So the same things like you see on TV or this and that, you're gonna have the best of everything that's gonna be here?
Instead of a two-judge format, they use a six-judge format. They do it just like the Olympics. They add all six of them, multiply by two, divide by fours, something like that. And that's supposed to keep many titles. We just, we try every year to make this venue bigger and bigger every year. And we do it basically because of kids. Now, if any of y'all ever been here or not, if you haven't, you need to come on Thursday. And they got to say it last year in Brandon. Those kids really enjoy it. And we're hoping by adding the ABBI, being in with it, and to bring a lot of people into this kind of thing, our venue. And tickets will be like it was last year. They'll be $20 and 15 at the door, or 17 and 12 at the gates. And also, the ABBI required me to have security on-site Friday to Saturday night. So any officers, police officers would like to work, have them get in contact with me, and we'll pay them. And all they have to do is sit out there in their personal vehicle if they choose to from 10 o'clock till 7 o'clock morning. Because these bulls is coming in here, like this year, you know, a bull that won the year-end champion, he won over half of the dollars. And just like any other sport, people tamper other people's animals. And no one can be on premises out back if they get caught with this walk by. First time an event like this has been approached about being brought into this area. And I talked with Jay at the office, the books ain't open yet, so we don't know exactly how many contractors we're gonna get. We don't know if we even get enough. But we're pushing real hard to make it work. That's about all, you know?
I know we're back for, because like I said, my kids, we're here both nights. Because like I said, my love, so I mean, it's...
Well, that's the whole thing with the event, you know? We want, you know, we want everybody to enjoy it. We want the city, we want the event to come in, and we'll just come back. We don't want to come in and we don't want them to come back. A lot of people think bull riders are gonna come in, hoopin', hollerin', carryin' stuff up. These guys, as far as the PBR, these guys are professionals. They got sponsors, they do this for a living. Like the group that come in on Friday, we'll catch a flight, we head to Chicago for Saturday. And then vice versa, the ones that are up there will be coming here for Saturday. Also, the PBR this year, now if you don't follow it or not, but the PBR is sold to ING. ING is the largest corporation in the world. And they've regulated the events. We've got the only tour in Provo that weekend. Unlike in the past, they have four or five. So I think we'll sell a lot of really good bull riders.
And probably bigger crowds and stuff too, because we're the only one going on versus like you said, four or five.
Well, that's up to the area, you know? I mean, I can't control who comes, you know? But you know, to get to save that caliber of contestants for that money, most folks have to go to like Atlanta and pay a hundred dollars.
What kind of purse is it?
Uh, I actually, I had me think about it. I think it pays $6,000 for the winner of the bull ride. And for the bulls itself, now I know they only, the winner of the bull for Thursday or Friday night will receive $6,000 in a buck. And the same thing for Saturday. And one reason I want to tell y'all, you know, like when you come in, some of y'all might get confused. You might hear a bull being called out on this contract tonight. And, you know, there'll be all different contractors. And you'll see judges scattered out. And that's what they're doing. They're marking just the bull. Like a cowboy's compete for money, thus contract gets completed. Which is my passion too, because if I'm gonna bring bulls I've raised, and actually, I'd love when my home, you know, hometown will be.
Yeah.
And I live in life, this is closest to home, you know? I mean, most time we have to travel 12, 14 hours to one of these events. And just like the next weekend after ours will be one in Fort Worth, and then one up on the city. So that's as close as home we get.
We appreciate it. More than you know, we thank you.
For the agenda tonight, I have, of course, we've had some resurfacing on Mitchell Drive and Tyler Lane. Sam Phillips, his opinion that we need to accept the project. And we got to repair that, I guess we'll do that tonight. I don't have any agenda, you know, this morning, we had a bid opening on the new fire truck last Wednesday. And Thomas has come through those bids. And I believe he's talked with the consultant that helped with the grant. But anyway, it is their combined recommendation. We accept the, it turned out that it's the low bid. It falls under the grant threshold of $250,000. And we're still, you know, still be looking at, of course, they're building this truck for Rainville, so we'll still be looking at, you know, probably over six months away. But I'm okay with their recommendation. If y'all want to take some time and look through it, that's fine. You have any thoughts on that? Oh, I guess we need that, basically. We went to your, your party, I want your, my staff.
You had a bid, a little bit.
Kepel and we're not exactly, when you were there, Kepel's bids were not exactly the same because of the body. Some of them they, I don't know why, but they bid on different type bodies. But anyway, they come to the detail, and that's what they come up with. Down here, sanitation for Selenia, after talking with the mayor there. I think they held off on that. They're dealing with some issues with the provider now. But I think we still have an opportunity on that. But I don't think we'll have to, the, the jury depends on that. Probably just put that guy. Personnel, of course, is the police department. Talked to Tim about that. And, you know, if we, if we add one patrolman, that will get us to the point where we're running free as shit, if you guys know about the, the run of shootings and stuff. What he's also suggesting is tack it onto the list through part-time to use in the advantage of vacation or sit down, eliminate some, some overtime. And also, looks like we're running into quite a bit of overtime in the dispatch. And he'd like to have them do it part-time. So he figured if you want to add anything to that, or missed any points.
That sounds pretty good. You know, we, you know, Penner's gonna be driving the canyon soon, this month. So we're gonna go to night shift and we can get that other officer hired in as soon as possible. I'm asking for a certified officer. I know that y'all, y'all have a list and a postman for seven days in-house, and then the 14 days out-house. Am I, is that correct? Where I should... I don't believe we have anybody that's a certified officer within the city of Rainsville that's not already working there, that the police department has a patrolman. I would like to see if we could suspend the seven days and go ahead and put in the 14-day one, if that's okay with y'all? To go ahead and see if we can get this extra man hired as soon as possible, so that way we can go ahead and start running three on nights. We've had some issues about during our shift change or calls, one of these guys, one of the night shift guys, I'm gonna put as a 5:30 to 5:30 guy, so that way he's on the road already whenever the shift change comes, so that way the road is still covered. So he'll still be working 12 hours. He's just gonna come in a little earlier than some of the rest of them, so that way we have somebody on the road at all times. Because we, we had a little issue. Eventually, if we ever get to do day shift, that way that, that would be great. But right now, we're trying to focus on our night shift, make sure all that's kind of covered. And then the three part-time people, you know, that, that's gonna kind of help. Try to cut down on some overtime, or if we had special events, like with Ricky West Bull, that coming up, that, you know? Or with the Christmas break that's coming up, if we had some part-time guys, we put them in there. We had a, we had a little shortage when we were doing the homecoming program, but we covered it basically good. I mean, we did, we did a good job. It just, whenever weenies got put in down there, that kind of gave us a little bit more of a thing that we had to deal with. But I think, you know, getting some of these other big ones, I think that would be great. Just leave it up to y'all on that.
On the part-time patrolmen?
Yes, sir.
Would they be guaranteed set amount of hours? Or would just be somebody from a different pool?
No, it's just gonna be, it's gonna be someone from a different police department that's already certified. If we need them, we will call them in, just like the dispatchers. If you need them, we'll call them in. And we realize, the reason why I'm asking for threes, because we realize, like with our guys, if they work part-time, Rainsville comes first. If you're at your part-time job and we call you, I expect you to come in. And that's what the person that I, we'll have to show these other people that are working part-time, their full-time job comes first. And who knows, maybe at some point in time, they may like Rainsville enough. We ever have a full-time job come open, they may want to, if they work out well, they may want to come here. You know, it gives us an opportunity to do a part-time like that, decide are they a good fit for Rainsville? And if so, we'll know it when we have positions come open. And like I said, that's the same with the part-time dispatchers, you know? It's just not a set amount of hours that they're going to get. It's if we need you, we'll call you in and go from there. And like on, say if we get bad weather, we, dispatchers are real crazy whenever bad weather comes, or bad weather. We can call a part-time person in, and then they can help relieve some of the stress on the dispatcher while they're dealing with that. So that, that's just kind of the way that I'm looking forward to going with all this.
Do you have the job postings ready?
Do not have them ready yet. I mean, Ms. Kelly talked about some this week. We need to figure out, do y'all want to have the lengthy word one? It's gonna cost a lot of money to put in the paper? Or y'all want something kind of short and sweet?
The job posting is not put in the paper. It refers back to our website. It's way too expensive for us to do that. So it, it says there's an opening, what the opening is, and refers it back to our website. So it's one line.
Okay, because I was under the assumption...
Max two.
Yeah, we done that.
Got you. Okay.
No, no, that...
It always costs like $1,600.
Right, I mean, Ms. Kelly kind of talked a little bit about that, how lengthy of it needs to be. And because I was under the assumption that it was actually posted...
On our website. Yeah, that's always been the case. There was just a misrepresentation.
Me and Ms. Kelly can get, get on that.
I want to say that I've got job descriptions that were sent to me prior from the police department, that I can send to you if you don't have them, if you don't know where to...
I would have to give them to you. She, she posted, again, she talked a little bit today. We, we talked a little bit, that he's gonna try to come in. Some, this coming week, he said, might, we'll have to get some things, you know, that we've got to get into the state to close out the year. So I'm trying to get with him, see if he can give me those as well. Which, I don't know if I can bring it up now, if I can bring it up later. But me and him have talked about the police department with, get some renovation studies. Said he'd talk to you about that. And it was supposed to come sometime after October, so maybe sit down and talk to you about that through our, where we're staying or that.
Yeah, it seems like a lot of our city buildings are falling apart right now. But there are some areas that we have to address, because of my insights and of course.
So lots of that. I talked to you a little bit about that thing. He said if you were gonna, he talked to, that Tommy had investments and stuff like that, and I didn't know where we stood on that just yet. So I just want to touch that some more.
All right, I'll get with you.
We usually sponsor, we're corporate sponsor for the Children's Drive 50 Center. And so I'll have that to run up tonight. We can do a $5,000 sponsorship program, so I'll be with you tonight. I got this in the mail, and this is not on my agenda, but I'm gonna write it up if, if it's okay. Freedom Fest comes up, last Saturday in June. The fireworks company sent me a contract. If we go ahead and sign this now and pay our, our part of it, then it saves us, they don't, they don't tell me how much it saves, but their, their prices are going up a bunch this year. They're having trouble getting fireworks. They have to order way ahead of time. We've got to let them know a lot earlier this year than we did last year. So that's, that's just the contract and how much it is. And it's, you know, of course, we don't pay the whole amount anyway. Farming place I put, so that's all.
What's the saying?
I don't know what's the saying. He didn't put the slave, he just said it was going up a pretty good percentage. That's what he, what he told me. And I can try to find out, this has got to be done by December 31st.
How long have we used them?
This time, probably about six years. Yeah, might have been a little bit longer. And they helped their price. This is actually, um, this is about a thousand dollars or, or so higher, not hardly a thousand dollars higher than it was last year. He says it's going up a bunch because they, they can't get fireworks. There's only just a few places that they get them at, so it's getting harder to get. The military coordination board reappointing Jonathan Phillips to, we bring another up. And just had, just some thoughts about this. And we'd like to do it now, but I thought it was probably getting close to time to think about posting the chief's job. If Chief Centers is not coming back, if he's not, I had got to talk to him later. If he's not coming back, then we can probably do it. You know, sometime in the future.
Do interviews in January?
Uh, yeah, if we, if we do it now, it'd be about the first of January before we get to doing it, or at least two, I believe. So that's just my thoughts on it.
If you do that, set them up for January. Even if we bring it up, the way to do it...
Yeah, we, you know, start taking applications tomorrow. Let it run for, for the, what, two weeks? Let it run for two weeks, and then we can start interviewing, you know, in the process.
Or nature and open up the December.
Yeah, they run to January.
So you have to be internal and external.
Yeah, but I mean, you might as well put them both out there, so you'll have it all. You might go back and do it again later. I mean, if you put it out there, a lot of internal, but you'll start with your internal people anyway, to get that professional bug.
Sure. I know, I know we didn't...
And that's the same way with those jobs you were talking about earlier, is if you post it, you know, you can go ahead and post both of them, but you, if you find somebody internal, you don't have to.
From his sense, we're not gonna have anybody internal, because this is, this is actually creating a, a job.
And there's probably not anybody that's seen this, or that already that's employed and stuff like that, Tommy.
Well, I mean, for somebody internally, correct me if I'm wrong, for somebody internally to fly for it, it's allowed to move. It's not, not best for somebody that aren't working here. Does that make sense? Somebody that already worked here as a police officer. So, because it's a patrolman job.
Tommy would be the only one that would do it.
Tommy would be the...
Tommy would be more of a part-time, because he's already retired.
Because he's a part-time...
So he's, he's part-time.
Qualification-wise, he would do it.
Yeah, he would be the, what would that work on here, drive now? I'd probably Tommy a little bit.
Tommy, he's, he would, he could, the company wouldn't be able to...
Yeah, he would be more, he would be more on the part-time basis.
Because I mean, he's, he's, he's in that, yeah, position.
And me and him have discussed it already a little bit, and he is more looking for what he does good, and he just kind of helped out with emergency areas and stuff like that. With Tommy, on that.
The AgriCenter had to buy a bunch of shavings. And they're, this is the time of the year, we're gonna come up a little short on the money. And so I was just wanting to know if the city can have that real form until they get, you know, the money comes in and we can get the first of the year, or what we want to do on that.
How much is it?
58, 49.
And they make lots of money off the shavings.
Well, this is the thing. I mean, we did it pretty much about this time, this month, every year. We did something. The same thing. I don't have a problem with it.
They got much of mind counting on the game?
Well, they've got, they, anytime, all the time, and every year, it's always the same thing, November, December. It's, it's kind of slack times, they'll have events. You're competing against, well, if you're competing against basketball, football, college football, all kinds of stuff. You're not gonna have a lot of events that time of year, so it slows down this time of year. But...
Does anybody have the dates on when Mr. West's bull bash, April 9th, January? Okay. Well, with him bringing in the different contractors, there'll be a lot more usage of the barn out back.
It's the barn that go.
Yeah. So I'm pretty sure, that's, that's where a bulk of the revenue is generated, is through the lease of the barn and through the shavings.
All right. We got a renovation on the pass, and that's for our surplus and 40 old snowflake Christmas lights, where we bought new merchandise and stuff. And we've got some that we can sell. So I'm gonna be asking them to do that. And then I wanted to discuss and see if y'all looked over the sort of little renovation list and get y'all's opinions on it.
I think the toll's gotta be renovated. I mean, that's just all there is to it. I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of spending a little extra and doing a splash area of, at the Q and P.
When we discussed the barn, that was my thing, but I thought that would be the biggest plus for us, to be able to come out with it, western, to be able to do that. Because we talked about the splash pad first and everything, and we tried to do it, it kept like it was just going wrong. And buy this right here, you can do it all at one time.
What's, what's the timing on this? Because I'm thinking about that grant.
The timing, it could be pretty quick if we're going... It's gonna have to be, you're looking at redoing everything that's there. I mean, the way it rains and you're coming into the bad part of the year for stuff like that, so, I mean, I don't really know.
I just think it's been rimped, because the building's gonna be kind of open. The only person that I even, that I talked to that would even consider it is the company I'm burning on the council above, the best state company. Everybody else I talked to said we're too busy. And I, so I figured these guys are probably gonna be too busy too. But I don't know when they would be able to start it after we did this, I mean, anything. But that's really how I see it.
Well, once the shovel hits the ground, that's pretty much it for, for getting a grant.
Yeah.
So...
AMR, I mean, it's not a lot of money, but it's free money. Yeah. So that's not necessarily a two on that one. I'll check into that.
Hopefully, by next meeting, we can say yes or no.
Well, I mean, we have to be forward with the order broker, so I just have to talk through a note now about how that would work out. Because, I mean, I only submit the grant paperwork such a lot.
Well, I sort of echo the same sentiments that Mr. Hope said. I think that we will probably do need to move forward with renovations. If the city of Rainsville is going to maintain a, a city pool, then we need to take care of it. And it's...
What that was leaking for a year now is actually not what we paid.
And it's not doing anything good for the asphalt, having that much water run over it in, in the season park. And I assume all that water basically runs into the...
Goes into the park.
Yeah.
Follow, you follow the asphalt every time to your farmer's market, you went down there and just pick the trail where it's going.
But if you think about it, it's been, I know, fifteen years since we did any renovation to the actual pool. You know, if you were going to hold off a year on renovating the inside of the pool house, there's where you could cut your savings if you didn't want, if you didn't want to do it all. You know, but that, that place needs to be renovated on the inside.
That's my theory though, why we, like I said, we did the barn, and we had this estimate beforehand, that's why we're gonna do it. I think we need to get it...
I'm good with moving forward with all of it. And then whatever we can scrap up on the side, because I mean, this is what we planned for. So any extra would be good, but...
I don't mind the pool house, has been any internal renovations since it was built in the city.
We just, we just painted and cleaned as best we could.
Because if you look, half the door didn't miss it.
Yeah, tile, it's, it needs, it needs to be re-lived.
Doors are there, all plugs. I also think the splash pad may actually attract, be more family-friendly, and attract more people to it here in the summer. Because that's a little bit more fun for a cloud-playing splash pack and heat pool.
And it's, it's still a margin to get in at $3,000. And have a lot for our supervisor.
That's all I got.
I'm gonna make a motion tonight. We've had back and forth on the sewer loan and the whole sewer project, and just in case we need some help in organizing that and getting restructured, because we don't need this to go on the path, to hire Pat Tate to just kind of help lead us through this, if that was necessary. And that's all I have.
I'll just have draw your attention to the report that Alan provided. I appreciate him giving it to us this month. And that's all I have.
I have one item that was not on the agenda that Mr. Ricky Dobbs brought to my attention today. The stain pressure washer that the shop uses to clean the garbage trucks is, is broke again. According to Mr. Dobbs, this is to be the, it's already been broke and fixed three times this year, with each time the repairs costing somewhere in the neighborhood around $300. He said this one right here would also cost around $300, and probably wouldn't last long. So we have one of two options here. We can, we can patch this one in. He, he went and got a quote from Northern Equipment for a new stain pressure washer. It would be a 30 amp, 230 volt, five horsepower motor. It has 2,750 pounds per squared inch, and it goes through 2.5 gallons per minute. The cost on it is $2,359.99, and shipping and handling to, to get that delivered here will be $204.24. So that goes up, that'd be a total of... I, I'll leave this up to the wisdom discretion of the council, how best we're able to move with this right here, and soliciting, but I saw this matter.
Can I possibly bring under the card?
Do they notice? I wanted to give a quick update on the Shallow Estate Road project. We have contracted the county to do some grinding. Um, we have contracted the county to do some grinding and leveling and laying down a, a crushed granite with calciumate, calcium carbonate product and packing that in. Um, that project is still underway. However, um, the weather hasn't been very cooperative here recently. And so, they should be back out there to, to finish this up on a timely basis. Uh, they are waiting for the weather to cool off before they can continue with this. And... I want to give a quick little timeline of, of the leach aid project that's been ongoing at the wastewater treatment plant. And, and I'd like to thank a few individuals that was, uh, very pivotal in this becoming to fruition. First two individuals I, I'd like to thank is our wastewater treatment manager, Mr. Adam Staple. Without this, it wouldn't be possible. And I, I invited Councilman Mr. Fred Bobo to, to come by today because Mr. Bobo was the, uh, driving force in starting this leach aid process. And without him, this too would not be possible. And so, gentlemen, uh, I'd like to thank y'all both very much. In July, we had two council meetings, and James Payton attended both of those council meetings. And we discussed, and this is July of twenty thirteen. The discussion began to expand on what these two gentlemen started to bring in even more revenue through this, uh, stream. James Payton from Land Environmental came and, uh, told us the renovations and upgrades that would be needed to, to take on all of the leach aid. I had Ms. Kelly print out the minutes from those meetings, and you can clearly see that Mr. Payton was here and, and his recommendations were to upgrade facilities and that the additional revenue from these, uh, increased leach aid process and would more than pay for the upgrades that he proposed. In the October twenty-first, two thousand and thirteen meeting, uh, we took the vote to proceed with this project, and, and it was one that was passed with all in favor. We then moved on with the project. We made a few, few, uh, changes with the, uh, the sewer department. And early this year, in January of, um, January twentieth, two thousand and fifteen, we announced that we had paid off the nineteen eighty-one series bonds, revenue bonds for the wastewater treatment plant. And we began the discussion of refinancing the two thousand and five series A and B bonds that were taken out for some upgrades back in two thousand and five. In the February, first meeting in February, we began the process, uh, of working with Raymond James, and we refinanced the bonds. And both of those two moves created some substantial savings with the sewer fund. And, and one reason I mention this is, is due to the fact that, um, part of the proposed, proposal from Mr. Payton, Payton, was, uh, us going through the USDA Rural Development Association to do a, a loan combined with a grant. And of course, you know, grants from the federal government are issued out based upon need. Well, on August the fifth of this year, we did receive a letter from the USDA Rural Development Association that we were giving a, awarded a, a loan for the pool house with no associated grant. And the reasoning behind that was that they said that the city of Rainesville had the financial waiver file to procure the funds from other means. Which is, which is a nice pound and bag. I mean, I'd, I'd like to have the, the grant because that's free money, but that's their way of saying, "Hey, y'all have been very judicious with your, with your cash flow. You have managed your money very well and that you have the ability to go other ways and just straight up borrow the money." Well, Mr. Payton's from Land Environmental decided, or told us that he thinks that he can appeal this decision and that we still have the possibility of hitting a bond. And we did two things that were very pivotal. One, he made it aware, uh, made them aware that the proceeds that come from the sanitation department to the sewer department was a subsidy, subsidy and, and not a revenue stream. And, and the other thing that was very pivotal is that the council went ahead and moved forward, fast-tracked, uh, the bridge pond, the one point five million dollar bridge pond. And instead of just doing it for enough to cover just the cost of the bridges, we were, had a vision that it would help us get a grant if we went ahead and, and hacked on some capital improvement projects. And that's exactly what we did. Now, I, I, I mentioned all that today because, um, I, I'd like to announce that we were successful in the appeal process and that we have, uh, received the largest grant of, of this current administration. And the USDA Rural Development has offered a eight hundred and thirty thousand dollar grant to go along with this leach aid program. So I, I would like to, to give the council a big thank you also for, for having the wisdom and vision of seeing the bigger picture here and understanding how, how all of this works together. Um, essentially, now, the...
I think you know your back.
Additional revenue projected from this leach aid program will not only pay for the, the loan portion of this loan slash grant, but will also cover the cost for the first four, eight years of the bridge pond. So the capital improvements and well as the upgrades to the infrastructure, the wastewater treatment plant, uh, will all be revenue neutral. And so tonight, I'm going to authorize that we accept, or I'm going to make a motion that we accept the, the loan of, it's a one point nine million dollar loan, or it's a one point nine five million dollar loan from the USDA Rural Development at two point six five percent annual interest and the eight hundred and thirty thousand dollar grant that comes along with it for the sewer department, and authorize the mayor to sign the documentation with that, uh, grant slash loan. And that will be all that I, I have for tonight.
I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order Graham.
Present.
Hall of here, Leonard better. Freeman.
Here.
Here.
I'll review the minutes.
I can watch it, we accept the meeting, second by Freeman.
Motion to accept the minutes because President said, "Let her on, say hi." Any opposed? Uh, I've got Seinfeld recommendation to accept the project, uh, research and project, Mr. Brown and Tiger running.
Second it.
I'll make that from up there.
Got motion by Graham, second by Freeman, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Uh, I've got the low bid of two forty-seven, nine fifty even, uh, for the new two thousand and sixteen fire truck. Uh, this is on the recommendation of, um, Thomas Ridgeway and the folks at Children's Heart. Uh, of course, we've got a grant for this truck, and it falls under the threshold of the grant for two hundred and fifty thousand.
I can motion we accept the low bid.
Second it.
Motion by Leonard, accept the low bid, second by Lingerfeld, all in favor, say aye.
Oh, a quick discussion, and it's like, um, this is, if I'm not mistaken, a ninety percent grant, ten percent match?
Um, it's something like that. I think that's right because I think the total, total was like twenty-five thousand or something like that.
Yeah, it's around twenty-five thousand, the, you know, ten percent left.
And, and, and that will be paid for out of the fire fund, correct? Is that, that's usually how?
Yeah, it needs, it needs to be, and then if there's any excess, then they'll come out again.
Don't consider actually given, because they had to start a status fire fund.
Yeah, you just have to look at that and see if it's got enough money there to service the bay and all that, so. If it can, we can think of that, if, if paying.
Any more special?
Yeah.
Got a motion in second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, I've got the recommendation to, um, post for the, the full-time patrol and the three part-time patrol and the two part-time dispatchers.
Can I, I want to make the motion that we, we post all of them with the, um, full-time fire, a full-time patrol position, uh, be exempt from the seven-day internal posting clause of the job posting ordinance.
I'll second it. Motion by Graham, second by Lingerfeld, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bother.
Uh, I'm, I'm making a motion that we sponsor the Children's Act, the C Center for a thousand dollar sponsorship. It's like a corporate sponsorship.
I second that.
Motion by Lingerfeld, second by Leonard, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion to, uh, uh, reappoint Jonathan Phillips to the municipal coordination board.
I second it.
Motion by Lingerfeld, second by Freeman, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion to post the police chief's job for...
Month of December?
I second.
Motion by Lingerfeld, second by Leonard, all in favor, say aye. I just had a question, the hierarchy is not happening until February, is that correct?
What we had talked about when, when we were done is, by the time we post this and it goes through the regular resolution, we can only start interviewing in January. So it's good time for the...
That might be, okay, about that time.
Yeah.
Um, I make a motion that we, uh, have the Agri Center...
Did that go through? I don't think that went through.
Okay, we did not do that.
We didn't.
Okay, sorry.
Uh, he better get farmed. Motion carries. Okay.
Okay. I thought it was more discussion, more definitely. Um, uh, to, make a motion to, uh, help the Agri Center fifty-eight hundred and forty-one dollars for pay for the shavings.
I second that motion.
Motion by Lingerfeld, second by Graham, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, I will do a little bit more research on the, uh, our work before that's made. We'll have a short window before, before, so...
I'm fine with it.
Well, if you want to know what it's been going in, I'll try to find out. I, I wait for it, I wait for this.
Need to, I guess, make a recommendation on this too, with pass resolution twelve zero seven twenty fifteen, which is surplus and forty old Christmas snowflake lights.
I second.
We got a motion to pass the stated resolution, second by, uh, Lingerfeld, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And I was going to ask this too, are y'all ready to vote on the vote? And we'll try, so then we'll make a motion that we move forward the swimming pool renovation project out of the bond line.
I second.
We got a motion by Freeman, second by Leonard, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have.
I make a motion we retain Pat Tate to assist with our sewer loan.
Second.
I got a question, is there a contract?
No.
No, there's not. Well, we have to vote on a person, and he has to bring the retainer later.
This is in case we need him?
This is with him.
Is this a recommendation of the law?
This is a recommendation of the league.
I'm confused. Small lady. What kind of loan is that? Maybe, maybe a loan?
It's the, uh, USDA Rural Development loan.
Similar to Ag?
Well, it's the one that they had sent you a letter, is it about a month ago? The grant, the letters, the loan?
Yeah, I've looked at the detail, I don't have the information. I'm curious why the legal account was necessary, but...
Do you have a second?
I second. Motion is second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's wild.
I don't have anything.
I make a motion that we authorize, uh, Ricky Dobbs to order a, a new steam pressure cleaner from Northern Equipment, uh, at a cost of twenty-five hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-three cents.
Second. Motion by Graham, second by Hall, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I make a motion that we accept the loan slash grant from the USDA Rural Development for the sewer leach aid, um, upgrades at the one point nine five million dollars for the loan payable for thirty years and two point six five percent, and an eight hundred and thirty thousand dollar grant, and authorize the mayor to sign said paperwork.
Can you add a date when that needs to sign, please? Because I think we're under a timeline here.
Sign as soon, well, can it be signed by Wednesday?
Just add the date then to your...
Okay.
...motion, please.
Are you amending the motion?
Yes, I'll amend the motion to include a date. Uh, today is the...
Seventh.
Seventh, so it'll be signed by December the ninth.
I second that.
More question, um, the amount, is that including the grant? I mean, or is that, is the grant an addition to that?
The grant is an addition to that.
Okay. Motion is second, all in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries.
I'll make a motion that we pay the monthly bills as presented by the clerk.
I second that.
Motion to pay the monthly bills, second, all in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries.
Uh, I make a motion that we adjourn.
I second that.
Motion to adjourn, second by Leonard, all in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries.